I'd like to welcome you to our regular city council meeting of Tuesday, November 28th, 2017. If we, after our pledge allegiance, if we could have a moment of silence in remembering a fallen deputy sheriff overall, I believe his wake or funeral is today, so if we could possibly remain standing after our pledge allegiance in honor of one of our deputy sheriffs, please stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some of you may not know that deputy sheriff overall at one time provided the city with a lot of training for our youth on gun safety, on boating safety, and snowmobile safety, and was at one time intertwined in our community quite often, and it's a shame that we had to have one of our officers lose his life in that particular manner. But again, thank you for recognizing him and a moment of silence, and we wish his family all the best. And with that, Adam Kirk, if you'll call the meeting over, please.
Mayor Higley?
I am present.
Deputy Mayor Ziegler?
Here.
Councilmember Beagle?
Here.
Councilmember Gatchell is running a little late. Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Resnick?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Coram President.
Thank you. Any changes or additions to the agenda as presented, Mr. Steve Brown?
Mayor Higley, I have nothing this evening for changes or additions.
There you go. Thank you. Any from the dais? Okay. Next item on the agenda would be the approval of our minutes. We had a special city council meeting on November 2nd, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Any change? I have a motion by Councilman Beagle and seconded by Councilman Smiley to approve the special city council meeting minutes of November 2nd, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. Approval of minutes number two, the regular city council meeting of November 14th, 2017. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion or changes or corrections on those? Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Resnick and seconded by Councilman Smiley to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of November 14th, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Correspondents, we have none. And next item would be our call to the public. And the rules for the call of the public are as follows. The public shall address the council during the call of the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence, and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. Persons shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence, and shall state their reason for addressing the council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Anyone wishing to address the council on the first call to the public regarding any agenda item? Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item? Okay. Saying none, I'll close the first call to the public. City managers' reports, the departmental monthly reports for October 2017. Any questions? Councilman Resnick?
Yes, I guess these will be directed at Mr. Sigma today since the water department is not here. A quick question on the DEQ report that was filed. There were six items to be addressed, six action items. Were those just a matter of reporting and process, or were there violations there?
There were some reporting violations.
Reporting violations?
That came from the industrial users, so the paperwork didn't correspond with that, so we need to do a few corrections. And we have responded to the DEQ's letter, and we'll be following up on most of those issues.
Okay. So there are reporting violations, not actual physical violations?
Correct. Yeah, it was, yeah, no local intentional violations.
Okay. Thank you.
Who else? Councilman Beagle?
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I got a question under the economic development. It's not really a question, it's just a comment. I really appreciate seeing that there's a list now of you with the new businesses that you visited and the existing businesses. I appreciate that, and I know the businesses really appreciate when the city people walk to stop by to visit them, just to check up and see if they have any issues or anything like that. So I appreciate that.
Good. Thank you. What else? Councilman Gatchell?
Thank you. Mr. Sigma again. Did we, was there something that changed in processes? It looks like some of this has to do with reissuing permits or something to industrial users. Did we change something, or was this just a check-in and we have been checked in and on a while from the DEQ?
Correct. Yeah, we haven't had a visit from the DEQ in four years, with my understanding. So there's a few things that had changed in that process with permitting, as an example, and the dates that were omitted, if you will, from recent permits will be corrected, and we'll work on those changes.
Are we addressing all of the issues that were listed in the violation notice, or?
Yes. Yeah, including one with over township where we will be planning to be meeting with them in December at some point. All right. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Very good. Next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request. In which event, the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Have a motion. So moved. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Ziegler and seconded by Councilman Kennedy to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. The ayes have it. We have no unfinished business, and next would be our new business, and that would be new business number one, consideration of the mayor oil appointment of Kristen Resnick and John Smith to the Wixom Downtown Development Authority with terms to expire June 30th, 2019, and June 30th, 2021, respectively. Do I have a motion? So moved. And I do believe both individuals are here this evening, so maybe you just would stand up and introduce yourselves.
Just to say that the applicant Kristen Resnick is my daughter-in-law, so I ask council to allow me to stay on the dais, and I will just abstain from voting.
Does the mayor have no problem with that?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think we have any problem.
Why you have to stay?
Yeah, I don't either. It doesn't.
Yeah, it's a vote.
I think it's just simply a vote, and it doesn't involve any kind of financial gain or loss. You know, it's nice of you to bring it up, but I don't think you have to worry about it.
Thank you.
It'd be a terrible thing if you didn't vote for your daughter-in-law.
Well, thank you, Mr. Smith.
We might send you down the hall the other way to the police department if you don't vote for your daughter-in-law. So anyways, they're both here tonight, and they're both here tonight, so maybe you could stand up and introduce yourself, John, Kristen.
Hi.
Yeah. Come on up.
Hello. My name's Kristen Resnick. I'm at 1636 Way Hill Drive. I am a resident of Wixom. I'm also a business owner here. I own Dr. K. Table Bar &amp; Company with my husband, Aaron Resnick. And I'm excited to be on the DDA board. I feel I have a lot to offer. One, with being a business owner, I deal with multiple facets of my business every day, from marketing to branding, to HR, and so on. I feel that all these different things would be a great asset to the DDA board. Also, I'm an interior designer, and with the adoption of the Main Street program, there is a section in there that is around design, and I feel that I would be a great asset to this category as well. And then lastly, I am a resident of Wixom, and so I am very excited to see our city grow, and I would love the opportunity to help with that, and also gain new businesses and new residences, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's got mayor potential, I really think. In a few years, I know Deputy Mayor's going to be mayor for a couple of years, but she's got some mayor potential there. All right. John, come on up and talk to us for a minute.
Hello. John Smith, my real name. Thanks for having me tonight. So I am a resident of Wixom as well, starting in 2017. So I'm the president of the association in the middle of two, just on the other side of the tracks, the right side of the track. And, you know, I feel that I can be of value to the downtown development authority. I've brought in 20 years of corporate marketing experience, mostly in the ad agency world. And I am also a small business owner. I've been running for seven years, and I grew up in a small family business in Plymouth, and understand the value of downtown, and what it has to offer. I'm excited to raise some of those experiences, and in fact, my background, to help in Wixom, building this downtown. Appreciate your time.
Thank you to you both. I just might add to the council, if you get an opportunity sometime in the next several months, I know you all, we all go to a lot of meetings, but if you get an opportunity to just sit in at a DDA meeting, I think you'd see the work that we've done as a DDA in forming our board and empowering these folks on our board to help move and grow our city forward. And once again, I think Deb, you've done a good job of organizing that and taking their ideas and working with me, which I know I'm not always the easiest to work with, but you do take a lot of my ideas and run with them, so I think that's been great. And, but I would encourage any of you to come into the DDA meeting and just meet our members of our DDA, our board members, because it's really a whole new young group of individuals, and we're really excited. So with that, I've got a motion by Deputy Mayor Ziegler and seconded by Councilman Kennedy to consider the mayor oil appointment of Kristen Resnick and John Smith to the Wixom Downtown Development Authority with terms to expire June 30th, 2019, and June 30th, 2021, respectively. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Nice to have it. Thank you, Councilman Resnick, for voting. New business number two, consideration of the introduction of a mandatory ordinance to the City of Wixom ordinances, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.10, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Section 5.10.020, Definitions, and Section 5.10.074, Obstructing Traffic in Order to Conform to Changes in State Law. Do I have a motion? Who can tell us something about this? This ordinance?
I can cover the changes that are in there.
Yeah, I just, I mean, just for the people in attendance's sake.
Yeah, so the, we've had some activity on this ordinance already recently, and unfortunately, there was an update in the state that caused another update to be required, and essentially, the changes that are being covered here are addressing the idea of having somebody doing solicitation, peddling, if you will, in the streets. You'll sometimes see groups soliciting for donations with a jug in hand, with a sign over their chest that indicates who they're collecting for, a sign on the jug that they're using. That's what's covered essentially in this latest amendment to the ordinance. And there were several changes to it, some of them weren't my request. I thought some of it was a little bit too detailed and too prone to getting the city into issues that we didn't really want to get into. So there's been a couple of revisions to it at the 11th hour, if you will, after the packet was distributed to the mayor and council. Those are highlighted in the copy that you have. I think it's on the third page, I think it's the fourth page of the document, under C&amp;F, where there's some changes that are reflected there in strikeout language, or strikeout font on the document. So essentially, it's just to address the issue of somebody peddling, soliciting for donations in the street, and how that would be handled.
So what I'm trying to understand in with this particular ordinance, and I'm not going to mention any organizations, but typical, even our own, I mean, you know, we do a boot drive and so on and so forth, and so are we saying that during those types of fundraisers, okay, because it's essentially what they are?
Right.
That when traffic moves, the individual making collections, let's say, at Beck and, or at Wixom Road and Pontiac Trail, has to move out of the street when the traffic is moving?
Yeah, that's what it calls for. It's in Item C on that page four, where it talks about people to attempt to move off the roadway when traffic is moving. It's just to try to provide some guidance for it, to try to improve the safety of the situation. That's kind of a controversial item. It's something that's been controversial in other communities about having people peddling, soliciting for donations in the street, and this is just an attempt to kind of regulate it and keep it a little bit safer. It's a little bit of an unsafe situation, obviously, when you're in the middle of traffic collecting donations. So it's an attempt to provide some guidelines for it, and it was addressed at the state legislature level because it was a controversial item with local municipalities.
Has Commerce or Andorwald Lake adopted this? Because, I mean, they have similar fundraising, and I'll point out, you know, one that's at Beck and Pontiac Trail, which essentially to the east is Commerce, and those particular individuals might be, like I said, there's just a number of different organizations that use that. So would that particular corner fall under that jurisdiction as well, or?
Yeah, I mean, absent a local ordinance, it's going to be under the state legislation, and that's, I think, the reason for adopting a local ordinance, so you have some additional language in there that you can address things that were important to you. I can't speak to whether Commerce Township has taken action on it. I could ask David Scott to supervise in there and see if they have or plan to. I do not know.
Do we know if anybody's ever been hurt in any of our corners?
I have no information that indicates that's been an issue. I don't know if the chief can.
No, Mayor, I have no recollection of any pedestrian accidents involving solicitors standing in the street.
I just, you know, I think a lot of organizations, and again, including our own, our fire department, they, this is a good, I don't know that it's safe, it's never been safe, but it's a function that they do that helps them collect significant amount of funds. I know myself, I used to do the old newsboys down at Grand River and Wixom Road, and I feared for my life.
Right.
Yeah, because there's 45 miles an hour on Grand River, but I'm here today, but...
Well, the intent is to allow it, because there's different schools of thought on this, but typically, when there's nothing covered in the ordinance, you can basically infer that it's prescribed, it's not allowed. So this change basically makes that legitimate and allows it under this new state legislation and codifies that it's allowed in the City of Wixom.
Okay.
Just with that, the printed copy we got tonight, I asked, I think, last year, earlier this year, when we amend ordinances, can we just get one copy that has everything, like, highlighted or crossed out like we have here?
Right. Yeah, I can make that request, and I apologize too. It started off in color and it ended up being in black and white by the time it gets to you guys, so we'll come up with some way to try to make that a little bit easier, because it does pop and show the changes more easily when you have the color added to it. So, yeah, we'll work on that.
Well, just even the underline and the striker is great, instead of having two copies of the same ordinance.
I understand.
And then what's changing?
Having to read it from front to back, right.
Just wastes a lot of paper.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Smiley and seconded by Councilman Beagle to consider the introduction of the mandatory ordinance to the City of Wixom Code of Ordinances, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.10, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Section 5.10.020, Definitions, and Section 5.10.074, Obstructing Traffic in Order to Conform to the Changes in State Law. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. New business number three, request for approval of the Commerce, Walde Lake, and Wixom Trailway Management Council calendar year for 2018 budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Ms. McGee's here to answer your questions? Yes, Councilman Gatchell?
Thank you. I noticed after the three asterisks at the bottom says, "Due to inaccurate record-keeping, it's unknown how much of the fund balance is the Trailway Council or the Sellers escrow." Has that been resolved, or do we have any idea what caused that? Because with the spending last year and this year, we're kind of getting close to what the cities have put in, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, there's been, the accounting function, if you will, associated with the Trailway Council's kind of moved from one spot to another recently because of some issues related to that. And basically, during that process, most of the issues were resolved, but there's one particular issue that's still outstanding that's being resolved, and I don't want to get into too much detail about it because two lawyers are talking about it, but the legal representative of the Trailway Council's having a conversation with the other entity about working out the exact amount that needs to be transferred to make the books correct here type of thing, and that's the last remaining piece, and I've seen lots of communication on that. I think that we'll have a resolution on it probably within a week or so.
Okay. I mean, is the fund balance pretty close, or?
Yeah, I believe that it's, basically, there's just that one sum of money that's in question about from two different organizations that were working together when the trail first got started, essentially, and that issue persisted even through the transition. It was difficult to track down the ins and outs and what the exact dollar amount was, and that's what the attorneys are working through right now. And I expect it to be done a week to two weeks, probably.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think they're close. It's not going to be anything that would affect, just to reassure you, the need for any particular contributions from the communities, it's not that kind of dollar amount.
That's what I looked at, is, right, we had $90,000 in contributions that would equate to 2017, and this projected, we were still under that, but it was just nothing. If we run into more causes to go over, we are kind of getting close to what everybody's kicked in so far.
Right. Yeah, the thing that will change, that would be if we get good news in January, which is referenced in my manager's report later, if we get good news in January and things move along quickly, we might need to address the need for local match if we actually start construction in this upcoming fiscal year, but that's a maybe. We don't know what the status is on the funding yet.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Resnick and seconded by Councilman Beagle to request for approval of the Commerce, Walde Lake, and Wixom Trailway Management Council calendar year 2018 budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. New business number four, recommendation for approval of a resolution designating the city manager, Steve Brown, as the authorized city official to act on behalf of the city when permit applications are made to the road commission for Oakland County. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Resnick?
We don't have time to do one for the holiday market this weekend, do we?
That'd be a major rush.
No, it's great. I think that's appropriate, and I think that's a long time coming.
Yeah.
Our communities do it, and it's probably the best way to get the word out on any particular event.
Agreed.
Okay. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Ziegler and seconded by Councilman Kennedy to do the recommendation for approval of a resolution designating the city manager, Steve Brown, as the authorized city official to act on behalf of the city when permit applications are made to the road commission for Oakland County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. Thank you. New business number five, request for authorization for the Wixom Police Department Chief of Police to sign a memorandum of understanding between the Oakland County Health Network and the Wixom Police Department that will establish a law enforcement, excuse me, establish a law enforcement response with, help me with this one, Ron, naloxone?
Naloxone.
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 Naloxone. Policy to establish, ah, for a law enforcement response with a naloxone policy. Do I have a motion?
Support.
Yes, Councilman Beagle?
Thanks. It says here that we're going to be provided with the initial stock of the kits. How many kits are we going to get?
We already received the initial stock. We received it back in February of 2016 when the police department rolled out the program, the naloxone program. I want to say the initial stock was approximately 20 kits, and as we get low, the Oakland County Health Network provides us with the replacement kits.
Okay.
So at any given time, we have a surplus of approximately 20, and we put them in all, you know, in all police cars and everything.
All right. And the fire department, do we supply a fire department too, or is it just for?
You know, I don't believe the fire department receives their naloxone kits from the Oakland County Health Network, but I can check on that.
Okay. Councilman Resnick?
Now, in terms of the training that's provided then for all of the officers, similar to CPR, Red Cross, do you have to renew it every X years?
If the council tells me I can go ahead and sign this memorandum of understanding, essentially what I can do is it will give us a model policy on how to use this in naloxone that I will put in the form of a general order. It will be Wixom Police Department policy, and in that policy, it requires every two years for the officers to get recertified and to use the naloxone.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Deputy Mayor Ziegler?
I'm just curious, what, if any discussions you have with the attorneys about any kind of liability and part, did you, I'm sure you've had those discussions, what did you find out on that?
Yes, Deputy Mayor. Right into the model policy, right towards the end of the policy, it does a good job of baking in, right into the policy itself, the state law statutes that cover civil and criminal immunity for the police officers, and it's found in Public Act 462 of 2014. And essentially, it says if a police officer has been trained in the use of this product, administers it in good faith, they're immune from civil liability for injuries or damages arising from the administration of the law. So it's state law, but it also goes into the general order.
Thanks. Councilman Gatchell?
I guess, out of curiosity, since this was implemented February last year, how often have we had restock, or how often are we administering this?
Since February 2016, the police department has utilized it, has utilized the kits five times. The fire department has utilized their kits seven times since that February 1st of 2016. So in that 11 times, because there was one incident where PD and FD both administered an injection, non-injection of a nasal mist, there were 11 total incidents in that timeframe, and all 11 of them were successfully brought the person out with their opioid-induced overdose.
So I understand, because we talked a little bit about this, you and I, prior to the meeting, and Deputy Mayor brought up a point about the liability. And Deputy Mayor brought up a point about the liability. What I didn't hear is that the individual officer is protected, but what about the city as the city? Okay, so the, my question would be, yeah, okay, that's great, the individual is protected and immune, but the individual also works for an organization, the organization in this case happens to be the city. What assurances do we have that, you know, that a family member, that the person unfortunately doesn't get revived and so the administrator, officer is immune from any type of liability? Then a lot of times that family member will, you know, call Sam and the next, you know, the next one is they're looking at the city, oh, the city's got deep pockets, so let's go after the city, so what in that public act protects the city as an organization?
And that is, that's a valid concern, Mayor, that was something that I also looked at. The Public Act, the 462 of 2014, covers not only the individual police officer, but the law enforcement agency as well, from that civil liability injury.
Okay, so the agency, the police department, but does it specifically, I mean, I guess in talking to our city counselor, okay, I can see it protecting the police department, but then you have the organization, the city itself. And I guess that's where I'm not maybe catching the public act or maybe maybe the city being, the police department, maybe the city's protected because that's what I don't see. I, yeah, I get the officer, I get the police department, but now you've got the organi, you know, you've got the level, you know, the city, the organization, you've got the police department and you have the officer. So I just wonder if there's anything in that regard, and I apologize, I should have probably, I should have still probably called you last night.
And I apologize to you, I do not have the act in front of me, I just have the sample language that addresses the law enforcement agency and the individual police officer. Not, I'm not a lawyer, but I would have to assume, and again, I can print the act and get a closer look at it. But the law enforcement agency, the Wixom Police Department, being a subset of the City of Wixom, I would have to say that the City of Wixom would also be protected from that civil injury and that civil liability as well. But again, I don't have the act here in front of me to see if it's specifically.
Yeah, because the law enforcement's an entity of the city, but I'd just be, I guess I'd be kind of curious.
I agree with the police chief that we're set as long as it has some protection on the police department, the extension of that protection to the police department, that basically the city and the police department would be interchangeable in that case, and I think we're set.
Okay. I'm good. You're good, I'm good. But still, ask you to just make the phone call tomorrow.
Yeah, we can check.
Shoot me an email, it's fine. Feel good about my vote. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Gotchel and seconded by Councilman Kennedy for the Authorization for the Wixom Police Department Chief of Police to Sign a Memorandum of Understanding Between the Oakland County Health Network and the Wixom Police Department that will establish a law enforcement response with naloxone policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. New business number six, Recommendation to Approve Amendment Number Three to the Water Service Contract Between the Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Wixom and to Authorize the Mayor Kevin W. Hinckley to Sign the Amendment. And Matt Delaney from Suez fell ill suddenly, so, oh, Tim Sigma is here to fill in. Any questions that you may have on this, I'm sure Tim can help you. Yeah.
I'll say.
Oh, okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Beagle and seconded by Councilman Resnick. Any discussion on that? Yes, Councilman Gotchel.
I, did we have some questions? It looks like in the letter from HRC, they make some recommendations as to renegotiating the contract with Great Lakes Water Authority coming up since we're toward the end of our current contract. The way the proposal's written tonight is that we're just accepting this amendment. Are they, is renegotiating or should we be doing that ahead of this?
We renegotiate periodically throughout the contract. And we have reopeners, if we have a major business that comes into, into the city that would affect our water consumption or water use, we could go to Great Lakes at that point and have a re opener, there is a re opener clause for that. If we have additional, additional usage that we did not foresee and we can head that off before it goes over our annual usage or our maximum day, we could, we could go to them at that point and also reopen that. So each, every five years for the initial two, two pieces of the contract, so we had a re opener after three years and then we finished off a five-year term and now we're going into the next five-year term. After that, every four years, we'll go back to renegotiate the items that are used for, for the budgeting. And there's, on the rates for them, there's, there's two major ones really that, that come into effect. One of them is the maximum day usage and the other one is the peak hour usage. And the peak hour, we've, we've really taken out of the equation because we have our water tower. And our water tower currently holds enough water for almost a twenty-four hour period. So we can fill it during the evening hours when rates or electric rates and that kind of thing are inexpensive, so Great Lakes gives us that, gives us that time, yeah, to do that at a maximum rate. And that, that rate is listed in that, it's, what is it, four? It's four point three building the only day. The other piece is really not negotiable is how the distance from each of their water plants to Wixom. And that's a mileage thing, that kind of thing. And so our, we can talk about pressures, we'll guarantee a certain pressure for us. That would be another B issue or an issue for us that we could reopen for, but those are, those are really the only ones that we can all go back to and forward. Does that answer your question or am I quite there?
Yeah, it looks like, that was just my concern was it looks like the letter says that some things need to be addressed, but wasn't sure if we do that before we silence or as a part of this.
Those, those items that we, we looked at, we, they are on this.
Councilman Resnick.
Just building on that, the, as the volume increases then theoretically our rate will get better, is that it?
That's the intent.
Okay, so by raising our minimum MCF, then it actually helps us in a way in future negotiations?
It's a complicated, it's, all of them, all of them play a role in, in the volumes and that's why we're dropping our maximum day this time around because looking at, looking at our usages over the last few years, without Ford and those kind of things, which is where we really started, we're, we use less water and so we're able to maximize that usage. We have the meter, the metering area, the booster station that we have that's maximized or set at a specific rate, so we know we're not going to go over that. We're fairly confident that we'll be able to hit those numbers, it's a little less, so, you know, I think it was a break.
And the capacity of the storage tower is one million gallons, is it?
One point, one, two point five.
Oh, okay, so it's right about where our daily usage is, okay. Alright, thank you.
What type of additional industrial user would it take to boost our usage and drop our rate? I mean, I know we say Ford, but you know, I mean Ford was an assembly plant. Where, you know, manufacturing, like if they were, say, a transmission plant that would be using a lot of coolant for cutting gears and cutting transmissions and that, they would be using, you know, probably more water, so that being said, these transmission guys that are going to be coming in over here, this Tremec, is that, is that what it is? Tremec. Manufacturing transmissions, which again, like I said, when you're manufacturing transmissions, you have cutting tools and you're using a significant amount of water to, you know, cool the, the cutting process and improve upon it, so. I'm just curious if, is there a percentage number that we may be after or?
It would, it would need to be greater than ten percent of our daily flow.
Of our daily flow, okay.
And we're, we are looking at other opportunities, there are other ways to do that. If you think of, you know, you burn the pie scenario, if you think of rates that all of the communities that get water from Great Lakes, they pay a certain amount, and if we have a bigger piece of that pie, they'll, in theory, they would give us a better rate because we have more volume as a whole. One way to do that would be to join with other communities and do that. I'm not sure that's the right thing to do right now, but you know, there's always that opportunity.
We're, we're not sending any water to Milford, we're only taking consumer, right? That's still, we still have an agreement.
Yes, and that would be a re opener, for example.
Okay. Where are we at? New business six. We get, yeah, okay, we have a motion by Councilman Beagle and seconded by Councilman Resnick to Approve the Amendment Number Three to the Water Service Contract Between the Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Wixom and to Authorize the Mayor Kevin W. Hinckley to Sign the Amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much. New business number seven, Recommendation to Approve a Federal Communications Commission Lease Agreement for Newly Upgraded Wireless Reading Equipment for Use with Existing and New Census Water Meters and to Authorize the Mayor Kevin W. Hinckley to Sign the Agreement, do I have a motion? Any questions here? Council Resnick.
And the, the state of the art for these, is it still require the use of a vehicle passing through the neighborhoods to do the reading?
That currently, yeah. And when we go to the more digital frequency that we're looking at, we're looking at the possibility of improvement.
Doing the long-range, low-power type communications then, of having stationary pickup stations if you will?
From what I understand, it's less, it takes less power for, for this, which will, the battery life on the meters and MXUs will be longer. So they'll last longer, but yeah, that's the intent, that we'll be able to read them faster and more efficiently.
Because I've been watching some of the other countries, right, and in particular right now in Holland and in Belgium, they're doing it so it doesn't require any type of vehicle to run through the neighborhood, so.
I'd spoken with a few of them a month ago and yeah, it's very impressive. The issue with that is you need to upgrade your entire, entire network, if you will. That's also a change.
I remember five years ago, I was concerned that we were already starting with yesterday's technology, still requiring the use of a van to drive around and pick it up.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion by Councilman Smiley and seconded by Councilman Beagle to Approve the Recommendation of Federal Communications Commission Lease Agreement for Newly Upgraded Wireless Reading Equipment for Use with Existing and New Census Water Meters and to Authorize the Mayor Kevin W. Hinckley to Sign the Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, the ayes have it. Second Call of Public, Rules for Call of Public are as follows, Public shall address the Council during the Call of Public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first Call of the Public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. Persons shall not address the Council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the Council present. Persons wishing to address the Council shall identify themselves and their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the Council. All comments by the Public shall be made directly to the Council. Anyone wishing to address the Council tonight on the second Call of the Public? Anyone wishing to address the Council on the second Call of the Public? Okay, seeing none, I will close the second Call of Public. City Managers' Comments, Mr. Brown.
Couple of things I wanted to make note of here on my update for the Mayor and Council. New tax letter, newsletter insert, the finance department's changing the way that we're going to be providing winter tax bills. In the past, there was an insert that was utilized along with the winter tax bill. We've changed the way that we're printing the bill and we're actually going to provide that basic repetitive reminder information that we use the newsletter insert for on the back of the tax bill, which is going to free up the actual insert for other information that the city would like to share as public outreach for our residents and business owners. So we're going to change the way we're doing that, there'll be some additional information inside your winter tax bills, more so than you had in the past, so please take a look at that. We're excited about the chance to get some more information to our residents and business owners on that front. The other thing I was going to make mention of is the support Wixom Police Department's No Shave November thing's still going on, so if you haven't donated to that cause yet, Ron Moore's got a nice, nice beard in action there, so I've donated some money to that, I encourage other people to donate money towards that. It's a good causes, one that's very dear to my heart, it's basically donations to Prevent Cancer Foundation, Fight Colorectal Cancer, which my mother passed away from, and St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. So a good causes that they're donating money to, they're looking to raise twenty-five hundred dollars and I think they could use some additional donations to get to that number still, so if you're so inclined and would like to help out there, please do so, you can go to the No Shave November website and click on the Wixom PD team there to make a direct donation.
Oh, any questions? Chief Moore, did you say that you may be extending it through December to help support, help raise a little more?
I'm entertaining that idea, Councilman, I, we set a goal for twenty-five hundred dollars, we're about seventy percent of the way there. So if I get some of the officers to maybe kick in a little bit more money and let them extend their beardedness for another thirty-one days, perhaps we could get closer to our twenty-five hundred dollars.
They're like making the next round of the playoffs?
Something like that. We're considering calling it Do It Again December. Do it again December.
Ron just likes his beard, his wife wants him to shave it, that's all.
Thank you. Was that it?
Yeah, that's the only two things I was going to highlight in there, if there's any questions, let me know.
Okay, alright. Where are we at? Council Comments, Mr. Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of little things, congratulations and welcome to Ms. Resnick and Mr. Smith to the DDA. And as a reminder, the tree lighting ceremony is Friday along with the holiday market. Weather should be nice, bring the family, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gotchel.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Councilman Resnick.
Yeah, I also want to thank Kristen and John for joining the DDA, it's great to see the young blood in there and the renewed energy of our DDA, it's great news. Also, you know, heartfelt condolences to Ilmaazie's mother and the family, the Ilmaazie family, as they go through this. Small Business Saturdays, don't forget that's still on, just small business Oakland County. And I think through December 2nd, is that correct, Tim? And so support your local businesses and I think there's some really neat prizes, you can go onto the Oakland County website and register for. And yes, get out there at the holiday market and the tree lighting this weekend, the weather should be great. Again, we have a chance to, you know, really grow this into a class event here for southeastern Michigan. You know, considering we were one of the first ones to think about it and start planning it, a lot of communities are starting to add it now into their, their winter events. I think we've got, you know, a good start, this will be our, what, fourth year, Dan, is that right?
Fourth.
Yeah, fourth year, so invite not only your relatives, but many friends to come out this weekend. And that's all you have?
Thank you. Councilman Beagle.
Thank you, just thank you to John and Kristen for stepping up and being a member of the DDA. Got some work anniversaries here, we got Wendy Brink of the City.
Got some work anniversaries here, we got Wendy Brink at the city manager's office, Sarah Feifield from the library, the police department's got Officer Brenneman, Officer Pistolussi, Secretary Cynthia Rose, and Sergeant Michael DeRosa, thank you for their service to the city, and looking forward to seeing everybody at the holiday market, the tree lighting ceremony, and also Breakfast with Santa next weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, thank you for stepping up to be on the DDA, Kristin, same with Kristin Resnick, who is married to that blood relative of Mr. Resnick, last time ever referred to it. My condolences to the Mazzi family on the passing of her mother. Vilma, I'm sure, is going to need whatever support we can give her. The police department, I'm glad to see that we're setting up for our new lieutenants, that's great, it's, it's putting a hierarchy in place that should be there. Thank you for getting that set up, and that's it for me. Everybody, hopefully we'll see everybody at the holiday market, the tree lighting ceremony, and the Breakfast with Santa. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Ziegler. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A couple of things, welcome to Kristin and John, thanks for volunteering your time. Sympathies to Vilma and family on their loss. I know that the water bills went out, and I, I don't get many calls at home, but I got a call from a neighbor who was very upset about their, their water bill, they thought that it was really, had really increased from a year ago, and it probably did. That's what has happened here, we've, we've had to make some, some adjustments in the water bills, and, and I think that it's helpful for those that follow the, the minutes of our, our budget meetings and, and the, the council meetings that we discuss these matters, I think that it's, if anybody were to follow those, they would be able to identify the problems that exist, and, and the problems we've had in maintaining the funding, and I think that that's something that, that it would be helpful, I think, if, if we were able to have a, some kind of a one-page document to send out to people that call, that don't follow those minutes, and, and be, be able to describe what's going on with the water system, and, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, I felt like saying to the guy, wait, I didn't hear from you a couple of weeks ago, when we got a lot of accolades about forward thinking and, and planning ahead, and when the water goes out, we're able to have water pressure, but, but on the other hand, I was glad that he called because I was, I was able to explain to him some of the problems that, and then, then when he told me that he was actually in Arizona, I didn't have as much sympathy for him, so I gotta stay here in this winter weather, but anyway, that's kind of the, the discussion that I had on the water that I wanted to talk about tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a number of things, but first I'd like to just read a card that was sent to me on behalf of Karen Goodline to the city council and the, our employees. Please convey to city council and the city employees my appreciation for their sympathy and condolences concerning my father's death. Thank you and the city for the floral bouquet that you sent. Yours and others' concern and support have made this difficult time easier for me, and have helped me more easily deal with my grief. Signed, Karen Goodline. So I thought that was a card worth sharing. Also, I, condolences to Vilma and her family, you know, her mother actually lives in Albania, so it makes it even more of a challenge to deal with the passing of a relative, and I think we did send out something that we're looking to take some donations to help with a plaque of some sort for Vilma and her family, so if you're looking to do something at year end, we've got the November beard, we have Vilma and her family, so there's some opportunities there for us to donate. Also, this might take a couple of minutes, but I, I have a, I got a letter that concerns me, and I think our council should consider drafting a letter to sell, send to Congress. I think it's important that, that this letter was addressed, as Congress and Senate leaders work steadily towards our, toward a goal of putting a final tax bill on the president's desk before the holiday recess. I urge you to send the attached letter to your member of Congress and your senators opposing the elimination of the state and local tax SALT deduction. Working to oppose SALT in our capacity as a member of the Federal Advocacy Committee of the National League of Cities. The right to deduct state and local tax payments from income subject to federal tax has been an integral part of our federal tax code since its initial enactment in 1913. The deduction was designed to prevent double taxation, which would impose a federal tax on dollars paid for state and local taxes. Elimination or reduction of the SALT deduction will put pressure on our cities, many of which are already operating under strained financial circumstances. Local taxes will become much more costly for many of our citizens and our cities will be under increased pressure to reduce taxes with a consequent reduction of services. Further, it may be impossible to pass future tax increases, even if these are desperately needed. Our school districts are also dependent on the SALT deduction. They too will come under pressure to reduce property taxes and make, may be unable to pass critical school levies to maintain educational services. The SALT deduction is widely used by our residents who rely on this deduction. Our local communities are fully challenged and should not be used as the means to fund federal tax reform by making local taxes, which fund police, fire, public works, and educational services even more costly to our residents. Proposals circulating now would severely damage the SALT deduction by placing limitations or modifications on it, or by eliminating it altogether. Members of the Americans Against Double Taxation are working to preserve the full SALT deduction. Enclosed is a form with more information and current list of coalition members. I'm just asking our, our council to perhaps give our city manager the blessing to, for us, the mayor, and the city manager and the council to, to sign a letter in support of this. So I did bring it for you tonight, if any of you want to take a look at it, but I think it, it clearly states what we're faced with, and we all know that we're faced currently and going into the future with decisions that we have to make about, do we increase, do we decrease, do we support, do we not support? I think this has a good cause. Lastly, again with some of my fellow council members, I am glad to see that we had a good election, and our council was re-elected, it shows that the people in this community are supportive of what we're doing as a council and, and working together, and I'm, I'm hopeful that as we go forward the rest of this year, and obviously into next year, that we'll continue to do the work that we've been doing. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support?
A motion by Councilman Smiley, and seconded by Councilman Resnick to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, have a good evening.